Okay, it's six o'clock and I'm calling this meeting into the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. First item that we have here is roll call.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Erasmo Villarreal.
Present.
Vice Chairman Jose Tejés. Jorge Dominguez.
Present.
Rafael Dueñas.
Present.
Abraham Lugo.
Present.
Johnny Narváiz.
Present.
Rubén Lugalde.
Here.
Larry Divalina.
Here.
And Carlos Flores. Carlos Flores. Mr. Chairman, for the record, you do have form.
Thank you. I did get some communication from Commissioner Tejés that he would not be able to attend the meeting. He had some personal business to take care of. So I would like a motion to excuse him. So.
Second Dominguez.
And a second from Dominguez, all those in favor. Say aye.
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 Okay.
Aye.
Next item is a consideration of the approval of the minutes of the meeting of October the first, 2020. So moved. Do we have a second?
Second Narváiz.
By Narváiz, all those in favor. Signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries, next item, Citizens Comments. Do we have anybody that is on the phone for Citizens Comments, Kirby?
As normal, we need to give it about a minute because there's a lag in the what's being shown on our live television channel, Swagit, Channel 1400 on the city's webpage as well. And for this time, I'll just explain a few things. Just remind everybody to mute your mics when you're not talking. If you happen to forget, I may mute you just to preserve the audio quality for the general public. So forgive me if I do that, just trying to make sure the audio is good. And then, as always, Commissioner, you have the ability to ask for a negative call instead of a positive, so people don't have to unmute if they're going, when they take a vote. You can ask if any are opposed, if you choose to. And if we can just give about 30 more seconds, and then we will let you know if anybody calls in from the general public. All right, it would appear that we do not have anybody calling in under the general citizens.
Moving on to item number five, Public Hearings and Recommendations and Ordinance. Item 5A, the amending of the zoning ordinance map for the city of Laredo by rezoning lot three, block one, the gates at a D and J Alexander subdivision, east located at 3145 Acropolis E Court from R1, single family to B3. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak, you may have on the line, you can put them on. Or you want to make your, I'm sorry, make your presentation first.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. Before I get started, let me just point out that this and the next five zone cases, or this and the next four zone cases, are all related, they all have the same representative. This one is the owner, but the next four, the owner is acting as the representative for the other four. They're all asking for a similar thing. They want to do retail slash commercial in these lots that are residential. So let me take you through this first one. Thing else will be fairly repetitive after that, should you choose to hear them together or not.
Kirby, I was gonna ask you whether we should take them all together because it's all about the same item.
That, that would be up to you, Commissioner, it would probably be a good thing.
The only thing that I did notice is that, like you said, out of the five lots, one is a separate owner and four is an owner that, four are owned by one person and one is owned by the person representing, I think all of them, is that correct?
Maybe I could suggest we go through this first one and after it, maybe you can hear the next four together.
That's fine, that's fine.
All right, the applicant here is Irim Cano Teifarias, the owner applicant, and Alfredo Cepeda is the representative. This is 3145 Acropolis East Court. The zone change is a request from R1, our lower density, single-family residential zone, to B3, which is our second highest business zoning, our community business district zone. The proposed use on this side is a restaurant. As always, we asked them to provide more details and none were provided. Seventeen letters were mailed out to surrounding property owners. We received zero letters for and zero against. Here's a look at the property. This one, you can see, is right in the middle of those five lots. So the two lots to the west and the two lots to the east are, are all the next four zone cases. Here is the current zoning, you can see it's all R1 zoning, south of Delmar Boulevard and east of John Alexander. There is some commercial across the street, but it's B1. Excuse me, there's B3 across the street and then there's B1 nearby and, and B3 kitty corner. Here is the future land use designation, the future land use map for this area calls for this area to be residential. And next door institution or where there's a school. Here are a few street views of the property you can see on Delmar as you approach going west. Here's an aerial view, and I wanted to point out here, the reason I, we took this view here is you can see that the road, the sidewalk jogs, that's a bus stop right there. And that's going to be important in just a second. So there's a bus stop in front of this property and the others. And then here's an aerial view, and on this I want to point out that you have Delmar, you have that bus stop, and then the access that serves all of these lots is a private drive. This is not a public street, it's a private drive and then a cul-de-sac at the end. And that's where all these four lots will, will have legal access now through that cul-de-sac. There is only one structure currently built, the rest of the lots are vacant, are still vacant. Here is the plaque for the property that just shows that this is a private drive. And that's how that these lots have access through the private drive. And then they're, the, the, they have a right-of-way dedication all the way to Delmar. So it's actually not private property after the private drive, it's public. So staff is not supportive of this zone change. And the reason why is because it, number one, doesn't, it's not a performance of the future land use map. Now, that's not always the most important thing, but in this case, I think it is because the commercial space here would not be compatible, compatible with the surrounding uses. But the most important concern here is the transportation concern. And that is that none of these, that that private drive was not built for commercial, it was not built to commercial standards. Approving it as is would, would put commercial traffic on a private street, which is not acceptable. It's not built to standard and it's not built to the dimensions that are necessary. For these reasons, we are not supporting the recommendation. We did call the applicant to let them know, we did explain our reasoning. As we do with any negative recommendations, we always call the applicant to give the heads up. We don't want to blindside them and we want them to have fair time to kind of, you know, make their case and know what we're going to say. So we did call the applicant, give them the heads up. This is the proposed motion. And I know the applicant is on the line when you're ready to hear them. And then I'm going to leave it here so the public can see the number and we can queue them up when you're ready to open the public hearing.
Very good, before I, I am going to open up the public hearing. Before I allow anyone to speak, I'm going to ask the commissioners at this point if they have any questions for the city staff.
I have a question, this is a Galden.
Yes, sir.
This is an area that has been undivelled for many years. And now we have an applicant coming in and risking to do the investment and the staff doesn't support it for obvious reasons, right? So how can we make this work? Because right in front, you have another commercial area with residential in the back. The comprehensive plan calls for residential area on a busy boulevard. It doesn't make sense to me, it doesn't make sense in general. So how do we make this work? So that the driveway not being off of Delmar, I think any, any smart developer would know that that's a, that, that'll be, he would be adversely affected if he doesn't have the access from Delmar. So is there anything from the applicant stating that he will correct that or do access to that property? Because I'm in favor for this, this development going forward.
The access on Delmar is not going to be possible with that bus stop there and, and from the private drive north or from between the private drive and Delmar, that's all public right-of-way that was dedicated. So that actually is not private property. And, and access there, whether they're going to have access is determined by the city, not, not these properties. Here, there's already a bus stop and there's a median, which makes it difficult. If you were to put the access, try to get around that bus stop, you're putting the access too close to the intersection there with JB Alexander and Delmar.
Yes, I'm sorry to interrupt, I understand the concern in the bus stop and I understand.
So you asked to make this work.
Sorry.
Sorry. The way that it's currently set up, the way that it's currently set up, no. But could something be worked out with this site? Yes, but not in this current setup. What I would recommend here, this would be a great site for maybe some multifamily, maybe some towns or something. You could, you wouldn't have to change the access, it could still access that private drive. You could have some, so if they came in from an R1 and they were asking for like an R3 where they could do.
No, no, Kirby, but, but, but right now what you're saying is you're assuming, you're assuming that for, in your opinion, this would be great for multifamily, but that's not the investor we have at hand. We have an investor who is willing to risk their investment to do commercial on this property, that is real. Investor come in here and try to do multifamily or residential in the past, I don't know, 100 years since that's been vacant.
Perdón, soy Dueñas. Aquí veo un edificio, ¿qué hay en ese edificio?, ¿qué es ahí?
Una casa.
Aquí en el medio es una casa?
Sí, una residencial.
Okay, gracias.
That, that house has been on, under construction for the last 15 years. Nobody's going to move into it. The whole place is a nicer. I don't know who came up with the R1 designation, but clearly nobody's going to build a house, a nice house, facing Delmar. I mean, that'd be crazy. You have a buffer with the retaining wall or whatever it is that's in the back. And I think some consideration should be given for some other type of development. Clearly, whatever was planned here does not work and will not work in the future, not as an R1.
If I may, Mr. Chairman. I'm Dominguez, Commissioner Dominguez. I was, I was involved in buying some of the properties when that, that area was developed. And it was developed more into a nice gated subdivision. That's how it was intended, probably many, many years, like Larry said, maybe 15, maybe 20 years back. And the idea was to do nice, real nice houses that would be facing Delmar. And those houses would not only be pricey houses, but also it will enhance the, the look of the, of the boulevard. If you notice, the lots are in excess of 10,000, 15,000, in some cases even 20,000 square feet. And one of the reasons that, that I was not involved in the purchase because I couldn't, I couldn't come to terms. But I, I gave you the background because that access road was never intended for commercial. All the time it was intended for residential. And, and I agree with, with, with Mr. Galden in reference that we have an investor coming into that area. But I, I don't really agree into opening this, and this is my personal opinion, to business. One of the biggest setbacks is going to be the access to the, to the exit from, from Alexander. On a busy time, on a busy day, we're going to have a lot of vehicles exiting. If it's going to be a, a restaurant or it's going to be a business, once we, we allow for that to turn into a B1 or B3, then we're allowing, whatever is in that, in that area, in that zoning, it's, it's expected to, to be built there. And then we can't stop the developer because the zoning is already appropriate. I personally think that, that that should be used for a more practical residential. I'm not going to go ahead and try to give ideas to the developer because it's not on my, on my right to do it. I think that, but it is on my right to protect the community and also to make sure that the residents of Alexander are not adversely impacted just because we have somebody that wants to put money there. We have to think that Delmar, in particular that area, is a super, super high congested area with the school, with the exit and entrance with Alexander. So if that development was proposed for residential, I think that there's a lot of market, and this is my personal opinion, there's a lot of market to keep as residential and keep the residents from Alexander and, and the traffic from Delmar from being congested. That being said, once we allow any business to be there, we're creating a very, very dangerous situation, not only for the people that are going to be attending the, the businesses, but also the surrounding areas. And also the, the, the people that are not only living in, in Alexander, but are also traveling through Delmar. So that being said, it is unlogic to allow a B3 to be there. Not because the area will not be attracted to B3, but because the, the infrastructure is not appropriate, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for that particular purpose. That's my opinion, and I do not agree to change.
I'm going to open up the public hearing now and I'm going to allow anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change to go ahead and speak.
Could I provide one more point of clarification?
Yes, sir.
So access on Delmar, can you see my cursor?
Yes.
Access on Delmar is not going to be a possibility. But I want to point out that JB Alexander is a write-in, write-out only. That's why our recommendation, making this a high-traffic spot, something that would be commercial, especially a B3, to survive, you know, they, they need a lot of traffic. And that means a write-in, write-out, that means sending traffic in through the neighborhood to be able to come back in around and access that. When you're talking about a commercial businesses that, that have many trips per day versus something that's residential, has fewer trips, which is why it, commercial would not be appropriate here in our.
Chairman, this is, this is a Galden, so why, why can't we just do a curb cut there and put a driveway?
Because there's a bus stop already there and then you also have the intersection.
Why can't you move the bus stop?
Um, well.
Yeah, you can.
You can. I can suppose you can.
You can, I mean, I think.
The thing is that we need, we have a lot of candidates.
Hang on, hang on a little bit, I think, I think I've heard a lot of comments from the commission right now. Good comments, I think it's time for us to, to listen to the public first, and then we will continue discussion on the matter, all right? Let's go ahead and, this is a public hearing and I'm opening up the public hearing to anybody who wishes to speak for this matter, for the zone change.
Mr. Chairman, good afternoon, for the record, we have Mr. Alfredo Cepeda, representative for these tracks on the line. Go ahead.
Okay, buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes.
Si, escuchando esta plática, mi preferida, la disponibilidad obviamente de esta tarde que si se retiene, pedir un permiso para mover un poquito lo que es el área del estacionamiento del autobús, lo podemos reubicar, pero sí necesitaríamos un acceso por Delmar, el lado caso de este sexto, ¿se me explico? Realmente, aquí para nosotros un poquito, este terreno yo lo tengo vendido, el periodo tuvo un anuncio como por cinco años y para residencia, realmente nunca lo pude vender, por la, por la misma cuestión, ¿ver? Por el demasiado tráfico, ¿eh? Es por eso que optamos entre todos, nos juntamos los cinco dueños que somos ahí, nos juntamos a ver si queremos hacer algo, un local comercial. En un principio me decían que primero tenía que aplicar para hacer un, un, un REIT plan. Pero les decía, bueno, ¿y qué probabilidades hay que de que me lo, me barrayan a rechazar esta, esta petición y voy a invertir? Vamos a invertir ingeniero, se va a cambiar, se va a poner abogado para hacer una asociación y después si me lo niegan, pues va a ser un gasto inútil, ¿ya?
Chairman, this is a Galden, is there a way you could translate that?
Yes, this is Rafael. So what the applicant has stated that they've had this property for over five years and unfortunately they have not been able to sell or develop in any way where it would bear fruit as residential. Additionally, at this time, they've attempted or wanting, they've been wanting to do a type of commercial development because that's what they would see as feasible for the area. Now, they did say that they would be potentially interested in trying to work out something with the city to get that bus stop move over because they know, they understand that it's a hindrance to them as it is. But with regard to the residential, for over five years, they've tried and they've all gotten together because they have not been able to make it accomplished.
Okay, thank you for the translation. All right, does anybody have any questions for the, Mr. Cepeda?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Dominguez.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cepeda. Should I speak in English or Spanish? To me, it's the same.
I think he's probably more fluent in Spanish.
Okay, Mr. Cepeda, habla Commissioner Dominguez, buenas tardes, me puede oír?
Sí, claro que sí, sí lo oigo.
Una, una de las preguntas, cuando usted compró ese lote hace cinco años y sus, sus asociados, ¿se lo vendieron como comercial o se lo vendieron como residencial?
Esta propiedad la compramos residencial, de hecho yo ya estaba casi metiendo planos para hacer la, la, la casa ahí. Yo iba a hacer mi casa propiedad de nosotros, pero mi esposa de última hora no le gustó porque decía que era demasiado tráfico. Y tuvimos que comprar otra propiedad, compramos una propiedad aquí por Pueswick y ahí hicimos nuestra casa. Pero, lo pusimos en venta desde ese entonces, el terreno desde más de cinco años, el, el anuncio que se puso y se puso el REIT y realmente por toda la gente que me hablaba era por la cuestión, ah, yo pensé que era comercial y pues obviamente nadie está interesado para hacer algo residencial ahí.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I think that, that I'm gonna, I'm going to make a comment. I think that this can be work if we table this, if we allow the, the owners to, to have more a conference or, or negotiation with the, with the staff to try to agree that they can have an opening from Delmar. I, I think that us making a decision right now with what we have is completely out of order. But I agree with Commissioner Galden as to anybody trying to do a developer there commercial, it might work, provided that even, even that that, that area might, the, the infrastructure might, might not impose into the entrance and exit of, of Alexander, which is unrealistic to have that for a commercial, for a commercial. Mr. Cepeda, le estoy comentando a, a Mr. Chairman, a Chairman, a Mr. Villarreal, que yo pienso que si, si esto se, se hace table, o sea, estos items, y usted tiene oportunidad de hablar con la, con los empleados de la, de la ciudad, con, con Mr. Kirby Snyder, para tratar de solucionar primero la entrada antes de que hagamos una decisión, si hacemos table, usted puede regresar y podemos ver la opción de darle una autorización o una recomendación. Pero si, si lo negamos, pues realmente ya no puede regresar en seis meses. Entonces, eso es simplemente un comentario mío, yo no le estoy diciendo que haga, eso tiene que decir ustedes. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Are the other property owners individual owners as well?
They are.
Or, or is it developer still owns the other remaining tracks of land?
The way I saw it on the, on the agenda and on the plaque, there are four lots that are owned by one individual and Mr. Cepeda, the way I saw it, owns one particular property.
So is the other owner, is the other owner of the four lots, the developer?
No, I think it's Mr. Cepeda just acting as the agent for the other property owner too, to try to market the whole piece as one, you know, piece of property, even though they're individual lots. Kirby, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, sir, you're, you are correct.
All right, thank you. So that's, I think the suggestion here, you know, if you've got a piece of property, like I think all the commissioners are kind of like seen that has not moved in years. You currently have Delmar, which when you have a street like Delmar, usually your frontage is on, on a street that is a hot-traffic street or usually commercial. We've got an individual here who's going to try to move a piece of property and wants Craig zoning to see if they can move it as a commercial development. The obstruction that the planning department has seen right now, obviously, is the entrance. And basically, I think the way they've seen it is the, the obstruction is a problem due to the fact that there is a bus stop there. However, we must look at the big picture here, in my opinion, whereby we need to look at a piece of property that can generate additional tax base, additional employment, if it is a commercial site. The obstruction right now is an entrance that I think can be worked out with the city of Laredo. It's a matter of moving a bus stop to a different spot. And allowing, you know, I kind of did a quick calculation from the intersection to almost the edge of that property is about 400 linear feet, which is enough distance to be able to have an in and out. Any traffic that's going to be generated in there is probably going to be right in, right out anyway. But again, I think this is a suggestion that Commissioner Dominguez had, which I think is, is something good where maybe, you know, we need to have the applicant and the city meet, discuss the issue at hand in terms of, you know, can I get my entrance on Delmar? Where would the bus stop be moved to, you know, those kind of things. And certainly, if, if we could table the item and allow them time to, you know, explore these ideas, in my opinion, would probably be a win-win for everyone in this situation. Those are my thoughts, I'm willing to listen to anybody else's thoughts.
Commissioner.
I have a question, well, go ahead, go ahead.
Can I see the overhead again, Kirby, that showed Delmar with the lot?
This one?
Yeah, so the, the issue and problem that I see is there's a concrete median that divides Delmar going east and going west. There's also a stoplight that enters the Winfield, the shops at Winfield. So I don't know how far a distance can you have another stoplight to allow to come in and come out. So those are some of the issues and problems that I see with even coming out of that property. If there is, if there is only one way to come out, then people may take John V. Alexander to take the turnaround to come back in.
I think what we're all looking at is having an, a driveway on Delmar, okay? Because you do have a concrete median there, that driveway into that particular piece of property, if it's developed as one piece of property, as a commercial strip, then your entrance is going to be right in and your exit is going to be right out and you don't have an, an entrance or exit on that private driveway. I mean, that would be one of the things that I think should, you know, you should close that one off and just leave one on Delmar. I think that would work, you know?
I have a question for the staff and the building department.
Hey, wait a minute, wait a minute, Johnny, did, are you, are you through or do you have some other comments?
No, I just wanted steps.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Galden.
So it would.
I mean, it would be into the best interest of whoever purchases the, the property to do commercial strip to have an entrance on east Delmar. I don't think anybody in their right mind with a good business acumen would not do that, right?
Right.
So when you develop and when you submit your plans to the building department, there is a traffic and there are plans that you submit to provide access and do road cuts and all access to the road. So we approve the zoning now because for, for them to come back and table the item, they've had many chances to meet with the city and discuss solutions. Obviously, they didn't come up with a solution, they only came up with a problem. The problem is obvious, but what the city lacks is coming up with solutions to help the applicant move this project forward. And that wasn't, that wasn't addressed today. So you submit these plans, you're going to have, you're going to submit driveway plans. So you can make these plans, you're gonna have, you're gonna have driveway plans.
I can respond to that, Commissioner.
We did ask the applicant several times to provide plans and they, as of yet, haven't. I think one of the challenges for them is that they're not professional developers, they're property owners.
No, 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 but they're trying to sell the land, Kirby. When they sell it to someone like me that I'm gonna develop, I'm gonna come and bring you those plans and you're gonna tell me the building department's coming, you can't do that because you don't have access.
That can be addressed at this point. At this point, if we table the item, it's only kicking the can further down the road and it's not costing you, not costing the city any money, but it's costing the investors money.
Well, you certainly, you could certainly make that decision to send a positive recommendation to council. Just be advised that there is a complicated, it's not as simple as they could build commercial here if it's approved.
Well, nothing is simple, nothing is simple. If not, it wouldn't come to us.
Because there are issues.
It's gonna be difficult, but we have to come up with the solutions.
We're legally, we're legal to build commercial with the setup right here and then access in Del Mar would, is something, if we follow our rules that we have now and with that bus stop there, there is not a possibility for access on Del Mar. But if the bus stop is moved...
Then we could approve the zoning and if that's not possible, when they come up with the building plans, then they're not gonna let them build. There is no point to table the item.
Okay.
Santiago, ¿puedo hablar, Chairman?
Sí.
Bueno, este, aquí estoy viendo el dibujo y estoy viendo la casa que ustedes dicen que es. Es una casa en construcción que está como abandonada, como que la construcción no está terminada. Yo estoy de acuerdo con los comisionados, en parte, con Raúl Igualde, de que deberíamos de buscar que esto fuera posible porque es una inversión, es un negocio y ayuda un poquito al desarrollo y a circular de economía. También estoy de acuerdo con Dominguez. Así como lo estamos viendo, lo vemos un poco complicado, la ciudad lo ve complicado. Entonces, mi propuesta, ¿está ahí el señor Cepeda escuchándome?
Señor Cepeda, ¿está oyendo usted?
Sí, sí estamos oyendo.
Mi propuesta es unirme a Dominguez y que el señor Cepeda, sin incurrir en mucho gasto, nos haga un dibujo de algo bonito que quisiera planear, sí? Y nos lo presente, pongamos el table, lo pongamos en la mesa este asunto y nos presente, quizá quitar el camellón, este mover un poquito la, el bus stop, este... Porque yo sí creo que puede quedar ahí algo padre. En frente tenemos una plaza comercial, un poquito más a la derecha hay otra plaza comercial. Se me hace que Del Mar sí puede ser una calle de negocios y de cosas comerciales. Quizás a lo mejor también dijeron, por ahí no recuerdo quién, que era un excelente lugar para apartamentos. Sí, apartamentos quizá con la planta baja también con locales comerciales, como si hicieron los que están enfrente de Reyes y que tienen local comercial y arriba los apartamentos. Entonces, señor Cepeda, mi propuesta, mi sugerencia para usted, creo que sí sería muy bueno que usted nos presentara algo un poquito más a futuro, un dibujo que no le va a costar muy caro, con un equitecto y volverlo a traer porque si usted corre el riesgo de que se lo negaran, sí, y dije se lo negaran, ¿eh?, no dije se lo negáramos. De que se lo negaran, son seis meses para volverlo a presentar. Raúl, aunque lo pongamos a la mesa, no va a tardar tanto. No va a tardar tanto. Tomemos una decisión, señor Cepeda nos presenta un trabajito un poquito más avanzado. Muchas gracias y estamos listos para tomar una decisión.
Bueno, yo tengo una pregunta. Esperen un momentito todos. Señor Cepeda, con lo que propuso el comisionado dueño, usted está buscando cambio de zona para vender el terreno o para usted construir en el terreno?
No, lo vamos a construir entre los cinco propietarios que somos, o tres propietarios, lo vamos a construir y nosotros vamos a ser los propietarios.
Ándale, okay, gracias, tres propietarios.
May I say something?
Yes, sir.
There is a bus stop on the opposite side of the street, on the other block, that is very similar to this one. So I don't see a problem in moving the bus stop to the other direction. Other issue that you have is that the street was not created as a commercial drive. So I would think that they would need to reconstruct the street in order to be able to do a proposed commercial development. The biggest problem that I see is that you have one owner and maybe four other owners and they all need to come together in order to be able to create a comprehensive solution. If you approve this by itself, then you still have the other tracks to deal with and I don't know that you can make that isolated decision without putting everything into the pot.
No, I agree with you. Right now, the way it stands is two owners, okay? One owner owns four lots and one owner owns one. So it's basically four and one. That's the way it's on the agenda. So, but I agree, I mean, they need to come to terms and obviously they've come to terms because the owner of the four lots has got Mr. Cepeda who owns one of the lots as a representative for them too. So I think they're in conjunction to be able to do a development here. So I guess the question that we need to now say is, well, this is still a public hearing, I still need to go ahead and ask if there's anybody who is on the line who wishes to speak against the zone change, against the zone change.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a quick comment?
Yeah.
The, I understand that it's only one person that owns one of the properties and the other, and apparently he's representing the owner of four lots.
Right.
Do we have anything in writing that is actually giving Mr. Cepeda power to represent the other persons? Because we might be changing the, or approving or disapproving for something that is not legal. I wanna say legal, I mean, we are, we're not attorneys. But shouldn't we have something in writing that is actually makes Mr. Cepeda a true representative?
I believe Kirby can answer that. Planning Department usually has a form that if you're gonna represent a different property owner, you have to have that form sent in. Is that correct, Kirby?
Yes, sir, of course, that's part of the application.
Yeah, that's part of the application process, okay? So it does have that form in. I mean, the planning department did check it and that's why they they went ahead and signified to us that he was an authorized representative of the zone change for the other property.
Chairman Villarreal, Scott.
Yes, sir.
I guess the question is, does this person wanna table this item? And if not, then let's just vote, because, I mean, we're just running around.
I agree, I mean, this is, you know, the only...
So whether he's gonna table it or we're gonna vote.
Yeah, the only thing we're waiting on right now is this is a public hearing, I have called to see if there's anybody who's wanting to speak against the zone change. I'm waiting on to see if there's anybody on the phone.
No, sir.
And if there is nobody, then I will call for a motion.
It would appear that we do not have anybody calling in.
Okay, so we do not have anybody who wishes to speak against. All right, so I guess at this point then I will be willing to entertain a motion by any one of the commissioners on this particular item, which is item 5A.
I'll make a motion.
Before we make the motion, I just have one, I just wanna ask Kirby one question. Kirby, earlier, just to clarify, if we do go with a zone change, you had mentioned that there is a possibility it could work, correct? It's just, you can't tell them what to do, but there is minimal changes that could make it work. Is that correct? Did I understand it correct?
So there would be multiple things that would have to happen, definitely. The, well, let me just say this, granting the zoning does not allow for the commercial buildings to be constructed. They have to meet the guidelines, there's guidelines with how the plat, how the plat is currently set up that wouldn't allow for that. There's access issues that would be, you know, would create a problem. There's, so there's multiple things they'd have to solve before they could construct a commercial building. Now, there is a residential building there that I guess they could turn into a, for a commercial use, but technically they wouldn't, they don't have a proper drive that would allow commercial traffic to get to them. So that may create an issue.
Right, and I'm sorry to interrupt, I guess what I'm trying to say is like, I understand that as is, it does not work, but however, there are minimal requirements that if they do some rearranging, then it is possible, that we can put them in the right, if they come with the right changes, correct?
Granting them the zoning doesn't, doesn't mean that they can do it. So if you grant them the zoning, they still have to work out the other issues, so...
Right, and I'm guessing that they're aware of that, they're well aware of that, they're, these these minimal changes are gonna have to be met at some point, correct?
Oh, I'm not sure that, to what degree, I can't speak to the degree of how well they're aware. If you decide to send a positive recommendation to council and council votes to change the zone here, you know, we've talked to the applicant and asked them for any more specific plans and we're here, or should they want to, but they haven't yet spoken.
Is the representative still available to, for comment?
Mr. Cepeda. Okay, he's on, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, Rafael, can you just explain to him that if he was made aware that there are gonna be additional changes beyond and is he aware that that he's gonna have to take care of those obstacles? And is he comfortable with that?
Before you translate, let me add this to it, to say that if, I think it would be helpful, so that we could explain to the applicant, and we've tried to reach out them, but if we can explain to them more to say if you want to do commercial here, here are the additional costs. Let's say it were possible that El Metro wanted to move that bus stop, but they're not gonna pay for it, so the applicant would need to pay for that. So in other words, this current setup with that drive is not gonna work. So there are additional costs that may make commercial prohibitive where you could put townhouses here and make money off of that without having to do significant improvements.
How's it for the past 15 years, it hasn't worked?
Townhouses there, they won't work there.
It's a zone for residential.
All right, Kirby, that's your opinion on that. But let's go ahead then and, Rafael, would you try to pick to the individual and say things we can do with this thing right now?
Absolutely.
They're gonna be involved, like everybody's saying that, is he aware of those costs if the zone change gets granted in the future? Or would he rather maybe be more comfortable with having the item table at this point so that he can meet with the staff to fully get an explanation as a commercial development? If the bus stop gets moved, there's gonna be cost involved, the entrance is gonna have, you know, all those other issues that may not have been explained to him at this point in time.
Yes, sir. Señor Cepeda, la pregunta por parte de la comisión, este, son dos diversas opciones, ¿verdad? Una de ellas, que si esto sigue para adelante y toma la decisión que siga para adelante, que si usted entiende que aún así tendrían que haber ciertas modificaciones que tendrían que hacer este, con costos adicionales para hacer esto funcionar como un desarrollo este comercial. Y la otra opción es de que si ahorita por lo pronto que la comisión haga table o frene un poquito el, la decisión para que usted tenga la oportunidad de hablar con este, el equipo o el personal del municipio para ver qué modificaciones se podrían hacer para las entradas, para la circulación y eso, para poder dar a fruto el desarrollo en el futuro.
Nosotros estamos conformes, esto ya lo hemos platicado, los dueños, los demás dueños, estamos conformes, que sabemos que vamos a incurir en costos y de una vez podemos decirles que si necesitamos empezar a hacer un plano para presentar la próxima junta con un plano del ingeniero, un plano del arquitecto, cómo va a quedar la plaza, si lo podemos presentar con mucho gusto.
Okay.
Mr. Cepeda, this is Igualde, can I speak to him to clarify something?
Yes, sir.
Señor Cepeda, habla el comisionado Igualde. Éste entiende que si ponemos este a mesa, va a tener que esperar para venir otra vez a presentar sus planos. Lo que yo tengo entendido es que todos sus planos civiles y todos sus planos de construcción se presentan al departamento de building, no a nosotros. So todo lo que vamos a hacer es detener su proyecto y usted está conforme con nosotros deteniendo su proyecto con detalles que realmente no pertenecen a nosotros, reparten a los departamentos de edificios. Es su decisión.
De hecho, decíremos algo de plano preliminar, que nosotros quieren ya hablar la próxima semana y hacerlo como te entregas. Para seguir adelante.
Sí, sí, sí entiendo, pero esos planos lo quiere entregar a nosotros o al departamento de edificio. Nosotros podemos hacer la zona de cambio y como quieran sus planos se van a tener que entregar al departamento de edificio. Yo, en mi opinión, no creo que nosotros este, realmente tenemos de detener su su propósito, su...
Zone.
Por esa razón.
Okay.
Sí. Pues ya nosotros incurriríamos con ingeniería a ver en qué forma va a dar, poder el acceso, en qué parte o algo y nosotros estamos de acuerdo en poder hacer cualquier cambio que también metía a la ciudad.
Perfecto.
Sí. I need to make a comment, Mr. Chairman, it's very important, okay? Because if we decide to allow the zone change, we're allowing a zone change based on the assumption that this individual who has had the property for five years will be able to come up with the infrastructure. I strongly believe in, I side with Mr. Igualde as far as that the zone must be done provided that the infrastructure for the community is there. So it is very important that that Mr. Cepeda understands that he must bring first all the plans in approval because once we approve the zone change, then he's got a hot potato in his hand because if he doesn't have the infrastructure, he will not be able to sell it. So it is only fairness for the community and for Mr. Cepeda. And I'm ready to make a motion when allowed, Mr. Chairman.
We are, I think, at the point where we can now go ahead and move on. I know that Larry Ovalina was wanting to make a motion, if I'm not mistaken, Larry, was that correct, to start?
I wanted to make a motion that subject to all the conditions that would be placed by staff on the development of this track, that the zone be changed to a commercial development and if necessary, that there be a replat so that the public improvements that need to be made in order to commercialize the zone also be included as part of the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second on that?
Chairman, just a clarification, this type of zone change cannot have any conditions on it and we're not, all you're doing is sending a recommendation to council, whether it's positive or negative. So you're not actually voting on the zone change, you're just...
Okay, all right, so we're, basically the recommendation is then by Commissioner Ovalina to approve the zone change.
A positive recommendation or a negative?
Positive.
Positive recommendation to approve the zone change. The second by Commissioner Igualde, I'm gonna ask those who are not in favor of the motion to approve to signify by saying aye, that they're not in favor.
I'm not in favor, Commissioner Dominguez.
Commissioner Dominguez is not in favor?
I'm not in favor, Commissioner not a vice.
Commissioner not a vice. Is there anybody else who's not in favor of the zone change? If not, the motion carries for the zone change. I'm gonna now ask the commissioners for somebody to make a motion to take items 5B, 5C, 5D and 5E together because they're all related to the same issue we just discussed.
So move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Dominguez and a second by?
Second, Igualde.
Igualde, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, all right, and then Kirby, we're gonna go ahead and take the other four in just one public hearing as they are related to the issue we just went through. So this is a public hearing and I'm opening up the public hearing for anybody who wishes to speak, or I'm sorry, go ahead, well, the presentation you've made, there's no sense in going through it again. It's just one for all four items.
Same presentation and the applicant's the same.
It's the same, so at this point, the only thing I can do is I gotta procedurally open up the public hearing for anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change. Is Mr. Cepeda still on or?
Yes, Mr. Cepeda is still available for any questions.
Tell them that we're taking the next four items together and that, you know, obviously he's in favor of the item and we're just going through a public hearing to see if anybody else is, you know, to be in favor or against.
We'll do that.
Okay.
And we are hearing no calls.
No phone calls coming in, so if there is nobody that's either for or against, for or against, then I will entertain a motion from anyone whenever you're ready.
So move Ugarte.
Ugarte is making a motion to close the public hearing and approve the zone change of items B, C, D and E. We have a second to that. Does anybody second Ugarte's motion?
I second it.
You second is the zone change motion of Ugarte, all right. I'm gonna go ahead and ask for the vote, those who are not in favor of the motion to approve the zone change, please signify by saying aye.
Domínguez, I'm opposed.
All right.
I'm not vice.
And advise, all right. Okay. With that being said, the motion carries to approve the zone change. Next item that we have is item five F. Amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by authorizing the issuance of a special use permit for a restaurant. Serving alcohol on lot one, block one, Alexander Commercial Subdivision. Phase fourteen, located eleven nineteen Fenwick Drive, building B suite two oh six, this is a public hearing. Kirby, will you make the presentation?
Yes, sir. The applicant is Sosa Har Enterprises, Laura Mendiola, owner applicant, Sheila Mario. For La Jiba Loca Restaurant, the crazy crab. I'm learning my Spanish and Librium LLC, Mario Val Garcia, representative. This is one 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 nine Fenwick Drive. It's the request is for a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol. And for for that use, you need a special use permit in this zone, so they have the correct zoning, they just need a special use permit. To have a restaurant that serves alcohol rather than just a restaurant. We mailed out twelve letters, we received zero for and zero against, here's the general location. Here is an aerial view on the corner of Fenwick and Bartlett on the southwest corner. Here is the current zoning, it is zoned B three. It is permitted in the zone with a special use permit if that's granted. Here's the future land use map. And neighborhood mixed use is the zone is the future land use. Here's a view of that corner of Fenwick and Bartlett. And another aerial view. And here is a view of their site plan. The proposed site plan, they are, you know, this is under construction or nearly complete, they haven't done the build out of the units inside. And so they have somebody interested in one of the units they're building out. It's the unit on the to the east, the farthest one to the east that has an outdoor patio area. And staff recommendation supports the special use permit, it it meets the location distance requirements. That are set in the ordinance for when you have a restaurant that serves alcohol, how far you have to be from other residential. Or from residential, it meets the parking requirements, it has access that it needs and. The the use won't be out of place on that corner, that's gonna be a commercial corner. So for these reasons, staff supports it, here's the proposed motion again. You're motioning to send a recommendation to council either positive or negative. And then when you're ready, the public hearing can be opened, here's the number, the public can call in should they wish to speak.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing, is there anybody? Who is willing to speak either for or against on the line, we'll give them thirty seconds to see if they come on.
Mr. Chairman, we do have Ms. Maribel García. On this on this item on the line.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
Am I on?
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, gentlemen, I'm here representing La Jiba Loca and Dr. Laura Mendiola's property. They currently do hold an S U P and a T A B C license. So now they're relocating to this location to get more exposure, but they will continue with their same concept.
Okay. Does anybody on the commission have any questions? None heard, all right, thank you very much for your comments. Is there anybody else on the line that is wishing to speak for or against?
No, sir.
Okay, well, nobody else on the line, what are the wishes of the commission?
Make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Dominguez.
Second Doña.
Doña seconds a motion, all those who are not in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. With none heard, the special use permit is approved. The next item is amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately nine point nine nine acres out of twenty six point six one acre tract. Conveyed to M R D M Development Company LLC. The this is located east of Cuatro Vientos Road from A G to R one A. This is a public hearing. Oh, wait a minute. Yeah, yeah, this is a public hearing. Does anybody, is there any, I'm gonna open up the public hearing, do we have anybody who wants to? Speak in favor or against the item, either or.
Would you like me to provide the presentation?
Yes.
As you mentioned, the applicant and the property location, I won't reiterate that. It is an ag district that they're requesting to residential. R one A, which is a slightly higher density, single family detached residential. Here is the aerial view. You can see the current zoning is already next to development that's occurring, R one A, that's just like it and the. The future land use is in compliance, it's low density residential. Staff supports the the zone change. And here's the proposed motion, you're you're sending a either a positive or a negative recommendation to council. And when you're ready, here's the number for the public hearing.
All right, does anybody have any questions for the staff? No, then let us, the public hearing has been opened, do we have anybody on the line wishing to speak in favor or against the zone change, rezone?
Mr. Chairman, we do have Mr. Ricardo Villarreal on from Howland Engineering on the line.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners Ricardo Villarreal, Howland Engineering. Just here to speak on behalf of the developer in favor of the zone change and here to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Okay, thank you, does anybody in the commission have any questions for Mr. Villarreal?
Are are the streets in these adjoining subdivision gonna interconnect with the property that is currently being proposed and designed?
Yes.
So so there'll be more than one outlet to Cuatro Vientos in the future?
Yes, this is part of the Los Presidentes master plan. The this area will have. There there this area goes into Isla Mujeres, which is a local collector and it goes into Los Presidentes right away. Which is currently at about eighty to ninety five percent completed in design and that Los Presidentes will connect Cuatro Vientos to Concord Hill.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
I move that we approve subject to the conditions that are.
Second motion, Dominguez.
And a second.
Just a point of clarification, there there are no conditions on it.
It's just a zone change, it's straight up zone.
Absolutely.
It's a rezone, it's going from A G to R one A. All right, so we have a motion and we do have a second. All those who are not in favor of approving the motion signify by saying aye. With none heard, motion carries, next item. Item six, review and consideration of the following master plan, item six A, review and consideration of the park view at Century, AKA. South Park Subdivision Master Plan, the intent is residential and commercial, yes, sir, Kirby?
Good evening, everyone, overview, the applicant is Zaptech Corporation. The engineer of record is Premier Civil Engineering. Twenty point eight oh acres located south of Jaime Zapata and west of Century City Boulevard. The zoning is R one A and B three, proposed use is a residential and commercial and the proposed lots are hundred and three, general location. Aerial view. Street view. Proposed master plan. And the comments from planning. Continue. Engineering and environmental. Water utilities and traffic safety. Parks and recreation and utility coordination. And the proposed motion.
Okay. Do we have the engineer on the phone?
Yes, members of the commission, this is Juan Mandíb for the record. Have Engineer Eduardo Guilleteres with Premier Engineering on the line, available for any questions.
All right.
Sir, Eduardo Guilleteres, Premier Engineering.
All right. Go ahead.
Review the comments from from staff. And we do have objections with the plan, the park and the recreation department comments. Our client dedicated thirty point four acres. Of parkland and their master plan, if one of you is twenty point eight acres and there are some conditional part dedication that we think that's excessive. They're not getting credited for the previous dedication. So we object to that. And. And also on the water utilities comments. The the impact fees, I guess. We would like to see it apply to the to the property and if they do, then that's fine. That's all I have.
All right.
I can respond to that.
Sure.
We don't have water impact fees, although that would be nice to have them someday. And then as far as the parks and recreation comment, that is more of a notification. In other words, you couldn't really strike that that comment, it's the the requirements of the parkland dedication ordinance are not something that could be. Could be strict, they're just they're there and they have to comply with them and so. They they won't do, they haven't done that analysis now, they're just saying they need to comply with it.
Okay, all right.
How much of the land is in the floodplain?
Yeah, that was gonna be my question, yeah.
Again, that's something when they, when this is just a master plan, when they bring in, that's typically what they look at, I can pull it up. But that is definitely something that will be reviewed as part of the process. Not not, in other words, nothing can be built in the floodplain unless they mitigate it and that's that's a whole process they'd have to follow. So we do, obviously, we look at that as part of our. But this is, when someone brings in a master plan or preliminary plat, that's the first step, it basically, they bring us a concept and once they.
They need to review it.
Pass that, go to to a process where then they, all those things get looked at.
All right. Mr. Guilleteres, did you hear the responses on the parks comment and on the water utilities comments?
Say it again?
I said, did you hear the response on the comment on the parks and on utilities?
Yes, and to say, we we object to in in general, and and I know they're very general comments.
Yeah.
Here may not be applicable, but we still have to, I still have to object because of what the reasons that I stated.
And and that's fine, I mean, but since this is a consideration of the master plan, there's still time for you to go ahead and work all those things out, okay?
Understood, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve subject to the following comments.
We have a motion, advise, do we have a second?
Second Doña.
Second for Mr. Doña. All those who are not in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. None heard, motion carries, thank you. Next item is a review and reconsideration of the Calady Industrial Park Master Plan, the intent is industrial. The purpose of the revision is to further subdivide phase one from one to three lots, Kirby?
The applicant, overview, the applicant is Deadson Holdings. Engineer of record is Beua Consulting, two hundred twenty two point forty four acres located northwest of Bob Bullock Loop and I thirty five. The zoning is M one and the proposed use is industrial and the proposed number of lots is twenty two. General location. Aerial view. Street view. And the proposed master plan. And the comments from planning. And the proposed motion.
Can you, Ralph, put that back on the actual plat, right there, let me see that for a little bit. Okay. All right, okay, do we have the engineer on the on the phone?
Members of the commission, Juan Mandíb for the record, have Mr. Oscar Castillo with Beua Consulting on the line for any questions.
Okay.
Hello, it's, hello, Chairman and Commissioners, staff, this is Oscar Castillo with Beua Consulting for the record and. We concur with the comments and I'm here with to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, does anybody in the commission have any questions for Mr. Castillo? Or the planning staff? With no questions, what are the wishes of the commission?
Make a motion to approve subject to the following comments.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second Ugarte.
Second by Ugarte. All right, those that are not in favor of approving signify by saying aye. All right, motion carries. Next item is preliminary consideration of the following preliminary plats and preliminary replats. Item seven A, preliminary consideration of the replat of lot one, block one, Calady Industrial Park Phase One into lot one A. Two and three, block one, Calady Industrial Park Phase. All right.
Overview, the applicant Deadson Holdings, engineer Beua Consulting. Thirty point forty eight acres located northwest of Bob Bullock Loop and west of I thirty five. Zoning is M one, proposed use industrial and the proposed number of lots is three. General location. Aerial view. Street view. And the proposed plat. Comments from planning and engineering. Water utilities and traffic safety. And utility coordination. And the proposed motion.
All right. Do we have the engineer on record?
Members of the members of the commission, the engineer of record, Oscar Castillo is on the line, available for any questions.
This is Oscar Castillo, we're consulting, speaking on the top of Deadson Holdings. We concur with the comment and we're here to answer the question.
Okay, does anybody on the commission have any questions for Mr. Castillo? All right, does anybody have any questions for the city staff? With none heard, what are the wishes of the commission?
Lugo, I'll make a motion to approve subject to the comments.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second Doña, okay, all those who are not in favor of approving the motion signify by saying aye. None heard, motion carries, next item, item seven B. Preliminary consideration of the Marquez Mines Road Plat, the intent is industrial, all right?
Overview, the applicant is Marquez Express LLC, engineer of record, Beua Consulting. Two and a half acres located west of FM fourteen seventy two and north, North of Mercury Mine Road. The zoning is A G, proposed use is industrial and the proposed number of lots is one. General location. Aerial view. Street view. And the proposed plat. Comments from planning. Water utilities. And utility coordination. And the proposed motion.
All right.
Can you put the aerial view up again, please? Can you put the aerial view up again, please?
Ralph, this is Bud's, what is that, fourteen seventy-two, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This is on the north side of fourteen seventy-two?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
What is it?
Ralph, or?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, that is correct. There is a trailer going next next to it, to the west.
Okay.
And and to the east is residential area?
Right, to the east is residential, currently unplatted tracks to the east.
All of the adjoining tracks are residential?
They're they're residential in use at this time, but they're unplatted in that section.
I understand, but
Yes, sir.
You know, they were there first.
That is correct.
Okay. Do we have the engineer of record on the phone?
Members of the commission, engineer Oscar Castillo is available for any questions.
Hello, Commissioner, Commissioner, that is Oscar Castillo representing Marquez Express. I'm here, we concur with comments and we're here to answer any questions.
Alright, does anybody in the commission have any questions for Mr. Castillo?
What type of lighting is gonna be used in the yard and are they gonna be on twenty-four hours a day?
It, you know, at the moment, I I I don't know, I'm I'm just doing the the plat, I know it's gonna be used for logistics, but that will very reconcile once it goes to to a building permit, once they they can actually go to, you know, once it's planted. And you don't have to comply with the city standards.
Part of the problem with these guys.
I'm sorry, probably the, as far as the 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 lighting within the, and that was probably your question, if I misunderstood it, but is on FM fourteen seventy-two, it will, as far as the plat will will, you know, comply with the, to having the 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 appropriate street lights. Also based on the guidelines from the city of Ray.
That that's not my question. The concern I have is that these these residential areas that are up there that are unprotected are being, in my view, being assailed by the fact that there's no subdivision ordinances out there, other than the model subdivision that the county has. And these people may be living there or have lived there for many years. All of a sudden, you have a industrial yard that comes in and puts these floodlights aimed at each other and disturbs the peace and tranquility of the neighborhood. And I would think that at the very least, that there be a requirement that lighting, whatever the lighting is, be done in such a way that it doesn't shine out to the sky. And I forget the term for that type of lighting, but that the lighting be done in such a way that it is directed toward the yard and it doesn't spill over into the adjoining neighborhood.
Oh, okay. The to be honest, I I'm not involved on that part of the site plan. And this will come in later on. I I don't know if the city has right now. You know, like a an ordinance to to require that. But I I think I agree with you, it should have it and everything that I have seen done so lately on yards like this is being, you know, like making sure that the the light just go to the to the actual light that that needs to be lighted and not, it doesn't collect away from the building. But I would be, not, but to be honest, on this one, I'm just lighting it as a as a commercial for the time involved on the on the on the top plan, on the next page, which probably will, I will definitely make sure that's the case on the on the on the street light, so that that's what I can say, Commissioner.
Just a point of clarification, at this point, we're just approving the plat, but when the commercial plans are submitted to the building department, one of the things that required to comply with is our our ordinance on lighting, which requires that the the illumination of the site is so that it doesn't, the light goes deflects away from any adjoining residential properties. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Alright, does anybody else have any questions? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
Since Ugalde, I make a motion to approve the item.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second, not a vice.
Okay, a motion and we have a second. All those who are not in favor of the plat. Signify by saying aye. None heard? Motion carries, next item, preliminary consideration of the plat of Park View at Century eight K South Park Subdivision Phase One, the intent is residential.
Overview, the applicant is Zapex Corporation. The engineer of record is premier civil engineering, six point ninety-eight acres located south of Jaime Zapata and west of Century Boulevard. The zoning is R one A, the proposed use is residential, the proposed number of lots is forty-two, general location. Aerial view. Street view. Another aerial view and the proposed plat. Comments from planning. Engineering and environmental. Water utilities, safety. Parks and recreation. Utilities coordination. And the proposed motion.
Alright, do we have the engineer of record? On the phone?
Members of the commission, Juan Mendive for the record. The engineer of record, Eduardo Gutierrez is on the line available for any questions.
Alright.
Good evening, Eduardo Gutierrez for the record, premier engineering. I've reviewed the comments from staff and we will coordinate with environmental, utilities, parks and utilities to try to get to see which ones apply and don't apply. But other than that.
Alright, thank you. Any questions from the commission members for the engineer or for the staff? Alright, none heard, what are the wishes of the commission?
Ugalde, motion to approve the preliminary plat.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Doña, second?
Second from Larry Doña. All those who are not in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. None heard, motion carries. Next item, preliminary consideration of the plat of Santa Celia State Subdivision, alright?
Overview, Seco Holding applicant, Seco Holdings LLC, the engineer is right engineering. The property is five point eighty-three acres located in south of US fifty-nine and east of Bob Bullock Loop. The zoning is R one A, the proposed use is residential and the proposed number of lots is thirty-nine. General location. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning, engineering and environmental. Parks and recreation. And utility coordination. And the proposed motion.
Alright. Do we have the engineer on the phone?
Members of the commission, I have Mr. Ricardo Ramos, engineer of record on the phone, available for questions.
Hello, hi, don't need to Ricardo Ramos.
Yes, sir.
Who is the adjoining owner to the south?
I'm sorry?
Who is the adjoining owner to the south?
To the south, um. That's the adjoining owner is Ramos.
Who?
Ramos, the attorney.
Ramos, the attorney.
To the south? No, to the south, it'd probably be Killam.
So is Donato Ramos the owner of this property?
No. It's Seco Holdings.
Danny Wires? Huh?
Seco Holdings.
Yeah, you mentioned Can Seco Holdings?
Can Seco Holdings or Seco Holdings?
It was Can Seco, correct?
Yeah, Seco Holdings.
Seco, Seco.
The 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 ones that are the owners for the subdivision. Now, on the on the south. I'm trying to get my brains. The the vacant, all the vacant property around it, it's from Don, it's Donato Ramos.
Okay. So it's the San Jose Ranch, that area, okay?
But, so this is where the I won't mention the the strip, but it's the strip of land that was done many years ago by Marina, remember that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It it's a strip of land that they used to block the other guy.
Yeah.
Chairman, this is Ugalde, is there still litigations on this, we 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 visited this before, right?
Yes, well, we, since last time, we we got denied that that variance, we we revised the plat to to meet the the traffic comments. And that's what we're submitting right now. And then my client, he is his attorney, sent the the revised plat to to Donato Ramos. But I'm not sure what's going on, but they did send it to.
No, yeah, this is Ugalde, that's right, this is the one that had the variance and the traffic department did a their opinion on on the safety of it, right? And now they came back and they changed it to
Yeah.
Yeah, sir, yes, that's all we did.
Yeah.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Alright, does anybody else have any questions? If not, go ahead, make your motion.
Make motion to approve subject to the comments.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. All those who are not in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Motion carries. The next item is the consideration of the following final plat and final replats. Eight A, final consideration of the international plat, the intent is commercial. Do I have a motion for approval? And do we have a second?
Second. Second, Doñez.
Second from Commissioner Doñez, all those that are not in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Next item is staff presentations, item nine A, presentation by the LW Campo staff on the Laredo Webb County Area Active Transportation Plan. Kirby?
Yes, sir, as you may or may not aware, in addition to being the director for the Planning and Zoning Department for the city of Laredo, I am also the director for the Laredo and Webb County Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. The MPO is the local planning organization that receives federal funding to make sure that when the federal or state government build infrastructure, transportation infrastructure, that they run it through the locals and and that's been around since the nineteen sixties. So over here, in in addition to planning for vehicle infrastructure, the MPO does all types of transportation planning in the region. And right now, we've been working on putting together an active transportation plan, which is something that many regions have done some twenty, thirty years ago. And while we're just getting around to it, but we we're building on a lot. So today, what we're gonna do is go through the 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 plan, the plan we're actually gonna bring you next time for a recommendation. But instead of just bringing it to you for a recommendation, we want to explain what it's gonna be first and and we're gonna send you a link later that has a little more detailed things you can look over. So we're gonna go through briefly, we're gonna try and spend about ten minutes here because we know it's already been a long night. We're gonna go through the chapters so that you know what's in the plan. And then the two big takeaways here are chapter four, the recommendations of the plan, and then the network in the plan, which will, again, we're gonna send you those links, so you'll get to review those in depth. But I want to say something, now, some of y'all might think, oh, my goodness, let me mute this and watch the football game or whatever's on, because because, you know, I don't, I only think people get around by vehicle and and especially here in Laredo, nobody's riding a bike around. If that's your mentality, let me stop you dead in your tracks here, because in a Republican state with a Republican governor who's very conservative and developer friendly, this is what our governor said. The bottom line is this, the way people get around, the way people live is going to change. This is, this is Governor Abbott speaking, this isn't California, whatever liberal, you know, governor they have. As a result, this generation of roads that we're in charge of building is probably the last major buildout of roads we'll have in the state of Texas. Even considering that the fact that Texas is one of the fastest growing state, is the fastest growing state in America. The future of transportation lies in alternatives to traditional motor vehicle travel. This was in January of this year, where Governor Abbott was speaking to a Rotary Club. So, look, the reality is, those people that are familiar with the process and the and and how things work, you know, how how Tech dot is working, how the funding work, they just know, we can't just keep doing it the way we've done. You can't keep building roads to keep up with population growth. At some time, no matter what you do, you you can't build more lanes and alleviate traffic. Anybody that's been to Houston or Dallas can understand that, you just can't keep, right now, I ten in Houston, if you count the frontage roads, it's got like twenty-eight lanes. And guess what? It's congested. So you can't build it out, you gotta provide alternatives. So with that, let me turn it over to Juan Mendive and Jason, you know, Osa, they're gonna come in and out to to provide overviews of this presentation. And like I said, we're gonna try to be under ten minutes with this presentation.
Great, thank you, Kirby. Alright, so we're just gonna give a quick overview of the chapters of the plan, we're not gonna go into
Back up if I can, the reason we're bringing this, sorry, I skipped this part. The reason we're bringing this to the planning commission is because when we adopt this plan, it's gonna be adopted as an appendix to the comprehensive plan. And our charter requires that anything we do that affects development in the city, any ordinance we change should be brought to the planning commission first for your input, your recommendation before we go to council. So I apologize, that's why we're here presenting this to you, because as the planning commission, it's your responsibility to send a recommendation to council because we're gonna be adopting this as an appendix to the comprehensive plan, one?
Great, okay, well, thank you, I saw us mentioning, yeah, we're just gonna give a quick overview of the chapters of the plan. So the first chapter in the introduction, we explained what active transportation, because maybe a lot of people in Laredo do not know what active transportation is. I just want to ask the commission, what do, if there's someone that wants to try and give an answer of what you think active transportation is? Is there somebody, may Commissioner Ugalde?
You want me to tell you what active transportation is? It's functional transportation is the mobility between point A, point B, point C in an effective and efficient manner, whether it be walking, cycling, driving. They need to run in harmony and it also helps with your activities. So if you work two blocks down the road, there is no sense for you to drive your car two blocks down the road. You can walk there or drive your, ride your bike there if the if the lanes are available, right? So, yeah, I put that some setup nicely.
The active transportation is, as Mr. Ugalde mentioned, it's alternative modes of transport specifically using human powered mobility. And then we go in and explain why do we need active transportation? Why do we need it? Because it improves access to jobs, supports healthy lifestyles and create a vibrant community. So we start going into, in this chapter, talking about the different benefits. So we talk about the health benefits of active transportation. In twenty twenty, the rate of physical inactivity increased to twenty-nine percent in Webb County. And this has led to an obesity rate of thirty-eight percent in the region. So we do highlight the different benefits such as health and mention that active transportation can improve health outcomes for the community. We continue to talk about other benefits such as equity and access benefits. So an accessible active transportation network connects residents to jobs and improves upward mobility. Here on the left, you see a map of share of households in poverty, and this is by percent in poverty. And this is by percent in poverty. And you see those that are in the central grid of the city, in the, what some might call the inner city, has higher concentrations of poverty. On the right-hand side, you'll see a map, total households without vehicles. Again, there's a concentration in the inner city of households without vehicles. So this shows that, you know, we need to make improvements to providing alternate modes of transport to create accessibility for people in these areas. Then we go on to also explain and highlight the economic benefits of economic. So in this chapter, we showcase how active transportation has a positive impact on the local economy, and how it benefits individuals, businesses, and local governments. The transportation costs account for fifteen point nine percent of household expenditures in the U.S. When you combine that with housing and transportation costs, that makes up almost half of total household costs. So by providing alternative modes of transport, we can hopefully help individuals and families save some money and also help the economy by providing, you know, there's been, it's been shown that active transportation also increases property values and has several benefits, like in saving for infrastructure. And lastly, to close this chapter, we highlight the traffic benefits of active transportation. It's been shown that increased rates of bicycling and walking reduce traffic congestion, improve safety, and preserve road infrastructure. And the truth is that we can't build our way out of, uh, congestion. As the population continues to grow, we're gonna have more congestion. And the solution is not building more vehicle lanes, so we need to find other methods.
Yes, and so in chapter two, this is Jason, we examined the existing conditions and analyzed the local situation, so that way we could, you know, really understand what's going on. And it turns out that Laredo is a good location for active transportation. We analyze and, we understand the needs there, the physical characteristics, as well as favorable climate. You know, if you look at the, the pie chart there, it shows local conditions on the way your disposable income, um, is what's available. And so taking all this into account, we, we really reviewed what was going on in the city and being able to provide a solution to them. And with that, you know, we looked also at the system demand. Aside from our local demand, we have large, obviously, international, um, crossing. And so this is two, twenty nineteen's annual crossings at bridge number one. That in itself is a large demand on our system, so providing that, that network for them will enhance our mobility.
So Jason, this is the number of pedestrians and bicycles that crossed Bridge One into our downtown area and then dispersed throughout the city. So for those that don't think, oh, we don't really need this, we, you know, most people just get around and buy a car. Well, look at the almost four million and a hundred thousand bicycles that have come across. Uh, there's a population there you may not be considering that are our shoppers, are our workers, right?
So you might ask how we developed this plan. And you might say, think that maybe we just developed this plan here at our office and everything, but we did several public engagement activities. So for example, we had some planning nights, you know, before COVID, where we were able to go out into the community and talk to residents, as you see on your bottom left, you have a picture of Jason talking to, you know, our youth, and this is an, at a, then, recreation center, just trying to get some feedback about how they think they can improve their community. On the right-hand side, we have a picture of Kirby talking to, maybe it's a future urban planner. And then in the back, you'll see you have some concerned looking adults. They're concerned because they don't want their, their child to become a future public employee.
They're looking at Kirby.
Yeah.
So we had the planning nights, we had, we have many existing plans, you might be surprised, we have nearly thirty different planned studies that we pulled from. We performed a survey where we have nearly two thousand respondents across the city that, that gave us their, their thoughts. And then we zoned in on a few residents in particular who use active transportation quite a bit in their lives and got their personal take, their personal, um, suggestions on how we could improve the system.
In those plans that we reviewed, we went as far back to nineteen seventy-five on that bike feasibility study, up till the recent twenty twenty. So it's forty-five years worth of work we're building on and integrating that into our plan, using the work that's been done before and really tying it into our current day with the existing conditions. With the public survey, as mentioned, we had nearly nineteen hundred respondents and over half, or just right, nearly half of them were under the age of eighteen. So our future of our city has really chimed in on this plan, as well as we've got a diverse group of, you know, incomes and, and age groups that, that really spoke up and provided their comments on how they wanted to see Laredo build out.
I want to give a lot of credit to our planners here. We, that is not a fluke that we got that many under eighteen, we worked hard. We, we, we've had this survey open for several months and we kept going out and promoting this out on social media and talking to different groups and the school districts again and again and again, Jason, how many times did we ask school districts to disperse this? To get this survey out, probably? I don't know, maybe a dozen times?
Yeah, four, four or five each, and then put, made a big push just recently, and it was very successful, like Kirby mentioned.
So through a lot of work, we really targeted that under eighteen, because you know what? We're, we're interested in what some of the old folks have to say, uh, but really, who is gonna be using this system that is gonna take decades really to, to come to fruition? It's the people that are young, so we want to make sure we understand where they're coming from and what their interest in this is.
We, we make a lot of babies here.
Yes, sir.
All right, so in some, just to review some of the questions that we add, asked on the top, you'll see, should bicycle lanes be required? In all the responses, eighteen ninety-five, the eighty-seven percent of the responses said, yes, we should build bike lanes. They should be required when we build roads that access neighborhoods. And another question we asked, would you ride more often with protected bike lanes? And so, as well resounding, eighty-two percent said yes. And yeah, you might think, okay, well, they went and asked all these bike people if they want to ride, and you know, these guys are just skewing their answers. Well, and then another question that we asked was, how often do you ride? And so we filtered that out, you see, I never ride a bicycle on the bottom left. Using that filtered answers with the same question, should bicycle lanes be required? Still, an eighty-two percent, uh, response of, yes, we, we should build bicycle lanes when they lead to neighborhoods. And then on the right, the other question, would you ride more often with protected bike lanes? The people that said, I never ride a bicycle, were still willing to ride a bike if there were protected bike lanes. So this really highlights the safety component, that people are interested in riding, but they don't feel safe on the road and, and they wish there were some more facilities that would provide them that access. This is our, our spectrum of, of different types of users of the transportation network. You know, as you may think there's just drivers, well, everybody gets around the city a little bit different. And these are just the highlight of, you know, a group of people that we went out and met, engage their interest as well as how they use the system.
And this leads us to chapter four, which is our recommendations. So the public engagement process that Jason just detailed helped us in the development of, of these recommendations. The recommendations are broken down by mode of transport. And I won't go through each of them, but I will highlight a few of them. Just, and just to note, they are summarized by priority from A to Z. And this was all based on feedback, feasibility, and the importance of the goals of the plan. So on this one for bicycle, one that I want to highlight is letter G, so we want to improve access to trails at the neighborhood level. Sometimes some of our trails might not be the most accessible from certain neighborhoods, so we want to make sure we provide accessibility to those trails. And we have our, our pedestrian recommendations. So I'm, I'm gonna shift your attention to the letter A. That's another recommendation we have, is to perform a gap analysis of the existing sidewalk network and make strategic improvements based on an improved timeline. For transit, something we'd like to do is to create a policy requiring development to reserve space for bus stops and loading bay. Uh, it's real important just to note here that transit's a key part of active transportation, because a lot of these people that are walking or biking, and they're using it for transportation, for day transportation, and not just recreation, might need to use transit to reach their final destination.
Now, we might have to amend A so that those bus turnouts can't be, uh, can't be moved later when someone comes to the commercial.
I was thinking about that. And the last mile, I'm sure many of you have heard of that problem, the last mile, someone gets off the bus, but they still have to walk a mile to reach their home. Uh, just to highlight some recommendations from here, we want to collaborate with a third-party micro-mobility provider to establish a bike share program in Laredo. And we also, and letter D, enhance transit stops to provide micro-mobility hubs. Something that's also very important is wayfinding. So we have trails, you know, but people might not know where to go, how to access these trails, or where those trails take you, so.
And that's a, that's a question worth asking. Commissioner Villarreal, how many bicycle trails off, off, off trails? Well, how was the question go, Jason, was it on and off or just off?
Off street.
How many off-street bicycle trails do we have in the city? You're muted.
There you go. I don't know, I don't have, I don't have the number of how many we have, I do know that we have some to go.
What would you say?
Let's say make us a bike all the way down to the river.
How many would you guess? Just take a guess.
I would say on a, a continuous trail, uh, probably about three or four.
Well, well, great, you're highlighting the exact point we want to make, and that is that, Jason, how many do we have?
We have fifteen different facilities, and sorry, that wasn't on and off, so I verified, but fifteen total facilities.
Fifteen facilities and, and a lot of people, uh, underguess, that's one of our survey questions, and so really taught us, really informed us that, you know what? Maybe we don't advertise these as well as we could, so it's really important to let the public know when they're driving around, here's a big sign that says, hey, you're crossing this, this trail. And they might think, hmm, maybe next time I'll take my bike there, or maybe next time I'll walk along that, you know, they'll utilize it more because they know it's there.
And then finally, it's we have other recommendations which stand quite fit anywhere, and they're more programmatic in nature. So for example, like letter F, we'd like to initiate a bike to work for school day. Uh, we've seen this work in other cities, so I think it'd be a great idea just to promote biking in our community.
Would you do that, do it, what? Given our, you know, given our temperature, I mean, uh, you're gonna bike to work, you're gonna get there all sweated unless it's winter time.
Yeah, we'll probably have to do it when it's not too hot.
Yeah.
That, that is one of the questions we ask in our survey as well, is it too hot or too cold, but I'll keep that.
Yeah, I, I think that's one of the things that, unfortunately, you know, the, the climate that we have here is, is a, is a warmer temperature. Probably our best months of the year for us to do outdoor activities, you know, comfortably are probably, let's say, November to February.
Well, Commissioner Villarreal, we, we actually anticipated that, we've heard that a lot. And so we got the data together to show that there's a large number of people who don't think it's too hot to be active, uh, in Laredo, and there's a, and the vast majority of people say it's not too cold in the winter. The reality is.
I think that they don't work outside when it's a hundred degrees.
The reality is you look at places like Minneapolis that have a very active, active transportation community, bike, bicyclers, walker, pedestrian. They only have seven months of the year, eight months of the year before it's too, way too cold, and there's ice on the ground, snow on the ground. We don't have any of those impediments, it just gets a little hot. And one of the cool things, technology-wise, is coming out, is with e-bikes that assist your riding. You really don't have to put in that much effort, uh, when you don't want to, when it's hot, so you don't have to arrive to work, you know, too sweaty. Anyway, those are things we explored, so don't worry, we're not naive in terms of the challenges that are here, and we definitely address those in the plan.
Good.
How much of the, how, how much of the River Vega land that is owned by the city did you incorporate into your plan?
Well, we're, we're gonna get there in just a little bit, we'll, we'll show you the network.
And so just to finish off these last two chapters, uh, the implementation plan, we taught, we created an annual benchmark to construct at least four miles of bike facilities, which are identified in our proposed network. And we developed a strategic framework to make sure that the plans implemented. And this will require, uh, lots of funding, different funding strategies to accomplish this. And our last chapter, complete streets, you know, we, something that is unique about this plan is that we're providing the city, the county, a policy for complete streets for them to adopt, and this will welcome people of all ages and abilities to be able to use our streets.
Uh, let me ask you, Juan, a question on that.
Yes.
Our existing streets that you guys are looking at in this plan, you know, I'm seeing the diagram that you're showing me, it's a beautiful, you know, street laid out. Uh, probably the right away there, it looks like over a hundred and twenty feet. Uh, what you guys are looking at right now, we have a lot of already existing streets that are narrow, for lack of a better word. Uh, what is it that you guys are looking at in terms of, okay, we, we want to do a policy? Is it certain sections that we would be looking at to incorporate bike lanes? Or what is your thinking or, or part of the plan on that?
Commissioner, I'll take that question.
All right.
We want a policy in place that requires it, uh, certain elements when they're on the plan. So we're not suggesting bike lanes, bike, bicycle paths, shared use paths, we're not suggesting that on every road, we're suggesting it on strategic, uh, corridors, strategic roads. But when it comes to building roads, they do need to include certain facilities, the minimum will be pedestrians, accounting for pedestrians, and some other places transit. But we do provide an outlet, you know, like on your water line, you got a little thing that'll, that protects it if the pressure gets too high. For ours, for this, complete streets, it's that we're gonna have some outlet for the city when, if the cost exceeds a certain, if the project cost exceeds a certain percentage, maybe it's, you know, ten percent or twenty percent of the total project cost. If it, let me restate that, if, if adding, if making the street a complete street exceeds a certain percentage of the project cost, total project cost, then the city can optionally choose not to do that. And, um, but the, but the key point here is they just can't ignore it, they gotta consider it and say, hey, we looked at it and it is too expensive, so we're making the decision not to include it. We likely will include that as a, as one of the, um, one of the things we include in this policy. Because you're right, you don't just want to put them everywhere where they don't get you, you're absolutely right.
Well, Kirby, here, let me ask you something else. I mean, obviously, we go ahead and incorporate a plan like this, as development goes into the future, your right-of-way standards for streets are gonna change, aren't they?
Well, they already have, sir, they're, they change with the comprehensive plan. So if you look back on your comprehensive plan, you'll notice that depending on whether it's an arterial or collector that they have to include, that their right-of-way widths are spelled out, and there are requirements for bicycle lanes and pedestrians.
Okay.
Want to refine that a little bit, because right now it's.
Yeah, I, I guess I was thinking more in terms, to be honest with you, of the residential streets. You know, that's really where I was thinking of, uh, because obviously you're gonna start it inside a residence to get out to where you're gonna go sometimes. That's what my thinking was, and I, I don't know what your thought process on that was. I mean, right now, what I'm thinking is, okay, well, we'll just, you know, ride the bike on the sidewalk until we get to to a bike lane type thing, you know?
Exactly right. On our low-speed, low, low-traffic roads, it, it's not necessary because we can share the road, it's when you get to your more congested, your busier roads that you definitely need safe routes, or people won't use them.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
Chairman, this is Ogalde, I have a question for staff.
Yes.
How come you didn't include an economic impact that chapter up to this?
Oh, we did, that's in the, that's in the, uh, chapter one of the introduction, we, we include the economic benefit of active transportation and the impact of both that and in our existing.
I, I saw it presented, but it didn't look too impactful. So obviously, this is gonna cost money, but in, in order for you to sell it, I mean, I know, just off the top of my head, I could tell you that more people are gonna want to buy jogging shoes, right? Look at the people coming in from Mexico, one of the items that they always look for is shoes, because they walk a lot over there. Tennis shoes. Uh, bicycles, I mean, where are you gonna buy them? You have only two bike shops here and Walmart. Uh, I guess you need more detail to sell it, to sell it to the taxpayer, that not only is there a benefit to the community to have this comprehensive plan that's gonna add to your cost, but how are you gonna, how are you gonna pay for it? I mean, there, there could be assumptions, right? There could be hypotheticals, but they're good hypotheticals.
Yeah, I appreciate that feedback, uh, this is just a presentation, kind of an overview of the plan, so you guys have an overview. Um, the plan does include looking at the economic, both the economic impacts, the economic situation that make active transportation beneficial to the city. So those are things we address in the plan. So with, just in the interest of time, we're gonna skip a little bit through this, Jason, the point we wanted to make here was just that, uh, you know, we wanted to talk about how much we have. I think most people we've talked to, they overstate the amount we, we have, but they understate what the issue is. In other words, we, we have thirty-five miles, the city's twenty, twenty miles from north to south and ten miles east to west, and we have thirty-five miles of bicycle paths in the city. But all, almost all that is disconnected. Result is that our longest path, where you can ride A to B and not get off and then have to get back on, is only four miles in this Chacon Creek. So the issue here we're making is, we don't need more bike routes necessarily, although we're, we are asking for more. What we, what we really need is to make sure they're connected. And our strategy is double, connect, multiply. Double, connect, multiply. What does that mean? If we double the amount of miles in ten years, that's the left column, right now we have thirty-five. And in the next ten years, if we double that to seventy, if we. And in the next ten years, if we double that to seventy, if we double only adding four a year, which is very doable. But if we only do that when, we only add if it connects to something else that's existing, then in ten years, we will multiply to sixteen our longest route that you can go. Now, instead of having four connected miles, we'll have, we'll have seventy connected miles. So let me get into that network a little bit. I don't want to take too much time from y'all. Uh, we're gonna send this to you, so you have plenty of time to review. We're gonna send you two things. And by the way, this is out there for the public to view. If you go to our website and you click on current notices. If you do that, you're gonna get taken to the folder where we have all of our notices for the annexations, the plaids, the zoning. But there's a folder called Active Transportation. You click on that, you'll be able to see our plan recommendations and the proposed bike network. So for the recommendations, you click on that and you'll get to see all these that you can review in depth. The recommendations that we quickly went through in the presentation. And then you click on the proposed bike network, you're gonna be taken to this. And what you'll see is a bunch of colors signifying the bike routes at certain times. These can be, these layers can be clicked on and off. They're on the left. So if you click off the proposed and you look at just the existing, this is what we have right now. These are the bike facilities we currently have. And you can, you can expand this and you can get more details by clicking on these and zooming in. Now it tells you how long it is, what type it is. There's a lot of good data in here. So that's all on the left. Here's what we have existing. Here's what we're proposing to add in ten years. I want to say that we didn't just draw some lines on the map. First, like, like all this plan we reviewed, this comes from many plans, over twenty different plans and studies that the city's done from the nineteen seventies, a lot in the nineties and two thousands. Projects that are currently underway, projects there's funding for, projects there aren't. Uh, you know, the River Vega, several projects that have been identified, and then also things that could happen. We, we looked at the infrastructure, we looked at the right-of-way, we looked at what made sense. We consulted our, our traffic department and other departments. We, we consulted stakeholders who are out there. So there's a lot that goes into this. I know they just like, look like lines on a map, but, but no, there's a lot of analysis behind this. Here's the proposed projects to occur within twenty years. And then the proposed projects have built out. That, by the way, this is adding thirty-five miles every year, which again is very doable. We start with thirty-five, thirty-five in ten years, another thirty-five in twenty. And then another thirty-five have built out. Gives us a network. Um, and, and then in the, in the, in one thing we're working at is proposing into the new areas that will develop into the city. So this is a plan, obviously, that will need to be updated every few years, every three to five. So this is what we're gonna share with you. So don't worry, you can go into depth and we're gonna have another chance at this plan. We're gonna bring it back to you for recommendation for adoption at the next meeting. So we don't want you to feel it's rushed. You have a chance to review it. Let me review those next steps. We came here, uh, we, we already went to the technical committee meeting for the NPO. We, this is today, the planning commission meeting, October fifteenth. We're headed to the city council for a workshop on the nineteenth. We're gonna go to the policy committee of the NPO on the nineteenth. And then we'll come back to the planning commission on the fifth of November, the next planning commission meeting for your recommendation to council. And then council for adoption on the sixteenth. That's, it'll take two readings actually, so we need to update this. Remind me, Juan or Jason. And then the technical committee, policy committee, and then the county, we're talking to them when we can get on their agenda to present to them as well. We would like them to at least adopt the policy in here. So any questions or comments?
Si, dueñas. Estoy de acuerdo con, con los comentarios que has dicho, Kirby. Pero creo que se necesita más estudios. O sea, hacer un estudio en la población. Yo sugiero que hagan un estudio en, en Laredo College, en Tammy U, en las high school. Si los jóvenes estarían dispuestos a ir de su casa a la escuela en bicicleta. Este, todavía veo que, que Laredo no está preparado para esto y estoy de acuerdo también con Ogalde que a lo mejor es mucho gasto, mucho impacto económico para el poco resultado que podamos obtener. Yo en lo personal tengo mi negocio en las minas y algunos empleados de Santa Rita, del sur de Laredo, no van a ir en bicicleta a su trabajo. Eso es, eso es imposible, ¿no? Eso no lo van a usar.
Well, it's only impossible.
Sorry, este, Rafa, Tocayo, can you translate for me?
Claro que sí.
I think I understood enough to say that we, we looked at all those things, the plan, and once you get the plan, you're gonna see that we addressed those issues. But let me speak specifically that, to that pos, to that comment that it's not possible. There, there are routes that doesn't seem possible, and it won't be possible for everybody. We're not suggesting that everybody in the city is gonna ride a bike to work or to go shopping. Right now, if you look at the census, we get less than one percent. Less than one percent of all trips are bicycle, are by bicycle. In a city of our size, just an average city of our size in America, they're getting three to four percent. In the cities that are actually doing something, you know, they have bike lanes, they have a program, they have a plan. They're getting eight to nine percent. So we're not talking about twenty-five percent. We're not talking, we're certainly not talking about fifty percent. We're very realistic. We're talking about bumping that one percent up to just where normal cities are at, and we definitely can do it. So again, this is not about getting everybody to ride their bike to work. This is about making that option available to more and hopefully getting up to five or ten percent, which would be very good for the city.
Can, can I add to that, Kirby? Um, just in regards to a lot of the design, we designed this in, with that in mind. People won't feel safe right now because, um, there's not enough public awareness on it. So our initial tenure design is to go in through the off-street, go through the arroyos and the creekways. That, that way people are separated from the traffic and connecting those spaces, like Mr. Dogalina said, using the Rio Vega lands. Using that connection, the first one, top priority would be connecting Chacon Creek to Sacate Creek. Right now, Chacon Creek is four miles long from the river to just by, past Walmart. And then Sacate Creek is from the river all the way to Canal Street, close to the HEB. If we would add that one point five mile section between both along the river, we could connect those two sections into one continuous route. And that'd keep you off of the road for more than, I think, twelve miles if I'm not mistaken. And so just looking at those, um, those factors, we took those into consideration, understanding the public was not ready for people on the road just yet. But we wanted to give people that access to connect to, across town, as well as connect to their green spaces. You know, this is a quality of life component that all of you all in business understand. And to attract more people to town, you have to have the locals be excited about their own city. And so we took into account all those factors, traffic, intersections, you know, daily traffic, uh, accounts. So we would love to share those with you all. The methodology, we'll go into it a little further in the next presentation, but I think we did take into account some of those. And we'll, we'll take your feedback so we can make sure we refine those decisions.
Jason, this is, this is Ogalde. Look, um, the, the, the plan is, is beautiful. It's, it's needed. But we need, you need to approach it like, like if it's your pain for it. Well, well, if you ask yourself, if I were to pay for this, who is my customer? How am I gonna generate the revenue to pay for this? So those are the questions you need to, give me some solid numbers. Or a feasibility study that gives me a, a, a hypothetical number, even with that. It's like, if, if we do this, it's gonna cost so much. And if we do this, I am proposing or implying that I'm gonna have an increase in sales tax from, from bicycles, increase in self-tax from more tennis shoes and you, you, you create line items and then put that number in there. And if there's a surplus, then it's a, it's a doable project. We can't, we can't sustain another project that is, is, is.
The counter to that, the counter to that, Commissioner Ogalde, is that we don't do that for the planning of roads. We don't hold the roads to that same standard, and we're certainly not proposing as many.
Yeah, but the, 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 the roads are necessary because we already have cars on the market.
That's the way, that's the paradigm we think. That's the way we currently think.
I, I think too that the funding sources that Raúl's talking about are, are, you know, his point is well taken. But remember that there are funding sources out there from different areas. You know, the state puts out monies for these kind of things. So it's not just the local impact that we would be, you know, uh, stuck with. Uh, there are grants out there that could be utilized to enhance trails and, and this type of stuff. So I think, you know, a combination of funding sources. But I agree with you. I, I'm sure that Kirby and, and your staff, you guys have already kind of like hypothetically put together some kind of a plan as to how are you gonna go forward in the future? How, let's say, phase one, you know, what kind of funding and where it would come from and stuff like that. And it's like a, a long-term funding plan and like, it's like an improvements project where you have a five-year plan, a senior plan, that kind of thing.
Exactly. Those are all things we address.
I, I just want to make sure. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that city bought over a thousand acres of land on the River Vega and it currently owns that property. And it was purchased many years ago with the intent to providing access on the River Vega, not only for bicycles, but also for automobiles. And that was the purpose of going out there and buying that land. The, the reason that the waterways were used in order to create linear parks was for the same reason. And all of those properties were partially, uh, bought during that period of time when this was all being put together. You now have raw land and you're basically coming up with a plan. And so I would want to make sure that you try to use all of the land that is available to develop this project.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Okay, this is Chairman, Commissioner Flores. Um, first of all, Kirby, uh, great, great plan. I love it. I think it's, it's, it's exactly what we were looking for when we were looking to get a new planner, exactly this kind of leadership that we need in our community. And I want to applaud you and Jason and Juan for your work. Uh, very well done. I, 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 I think this is a no-brainer. It's, this is the future. Um, it's not sustainable for cars to be driving in the roads the way that we have been doing for the last forty, fifty years. And, and this is a great plan for preparing for that shift in, in our, in, in, in the way that we, we travel and we transport ourselves. I, what I do like about, I rarely agree with Commissioner Ogalde, and I don't agree with anything he said right now. But I think what's important about what he said is that, and the same thing said either, but what's important about what the feedback was, is that there's gonna be a lot of people in the community who are very skeptical, who are very unsure, who aren't, who aren't, who aren't open to this type of change, uh, uh, occurring. And I think it's good for you all to take that into account in the presentations themselves and put more, and beef up those parts more, so that way you can anticipate those kind of questions because this is exactly the kind of thing that we're gonna need in our community and, and we need to be prepared as, as leaders in the community to be able to address those kinds of concerns, not because they're not, they're, they're legitimate concerns, but, 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 but they're can, but they have answers. And I, I just want to make sure that as you move forward in your schedule of presentations, that you all are prepared to answer that in more, with more clarity and, and show that it's an important part of what you're thinking. Thank you.
Okay, that's, I, I think that's good. A good criticism, we'll take positive criticism that we'll highlight what's in the plan because all those concerns are addressed. We just, we don't want to take an hour of your time. So we tried to condense it, but we'll make sure we highlight that with every presentation going forward. That there is a, that this is a conservative plan. We're, we're not proposing thousands of bicycle miles and pedestrian, we're not proposing that. We're, this is very conservative in terms of what other cities are doing. Conservative approach, number one. And number two, we're identifying sources of funding and sources of grants. Some of the projects already have that that are on the plan. So we will highlight that. That's very good, very good feedback. We appreciate that. We'll do that going forward. Because you're right, it is.
I think one other thing that we need, I mean, your plan is a good one, and what I'm seeing, I think one of the things we need to push heavily is for kids to go out and, and, and do bicycling. I mean, given that this Hispanic population has a high rate of diabetes. And now we're seeing a lot of the younger kids, all they do is sit back and play video games, you know, the outside activities are being curtailed. We need to work in conjunction, I think, with our health department to push this plan to get people to be more physically active and, you know, it's a healthier lifestyle that needs to be pushed. Because from what I'm seeing right now, kids don't want to go outside and play, they want to stay inside and play video games. And we need to figure out mechanisms, whether it's, you know, partnering with schools and in terms of a physical education class where you go cycling, I don't know, thinking out of the box type thing. That's just my comment.
Yes, sir. I would really encourage each of the commissioners to review the recommendations because, uh, many of these are, are, well, all of, everything you've mentioned is already in the recommendations, so.
Excellent.
I think you'll be pleased to see that.
Good. That's right. I think Commissioner Flores needs some more exercise too. He's a little chubby.
All right, Kirby, what else have you got?
Not much we can do for them. Well, uh, that's, that is the, um, the staff presentation, the next slide on the agenda is the official comments.
Can I comment, dueñas?
Yes.
Si, este, yo, yo pienso igual que ustedes, el, el plano está muy bien, está ambicioso.
Gracias.
Necesitamos, pero ya, son, hay dos cosas, ¿no? El ejercicio se puede hacer en los parques, eso ya está bien, está funcionando. Y aquí estamos usando las bicicletas como medio de transporte. Y ahí es donde no estamos preparados para transportarnos en bicicleta a nuestras escuelas, a nuestros trabajos. A, a leche, al, al, a comprar, eh, a los comercios, a comprar. Entonces sugiero que se empiece a trabajar con ayuda de los distritos escolares, con las high schools. Quien de estos muchachos que ya están en edad de salir solos a la escuela podrían usar este tipo de transporte externo, la bicicleta. Y utilizar pequeños planes pilotos para ver qué resultado tienen. Si viene cierto que a lo mejor se consiguen grants, no estoy de acuerdo que vayamos a tirar el dinero. Eh, esto, estas carriles de bicicletas nos van a quitar un carril de un coche. Y si no se usan las bicicletas lejos de ayudar al tráfico, vamos a tener mucho más problemas de tráfico porque tenemos un carril menos para, para los autos. Entonces hay que hacerlo con mucho cuidado, con precaución. La difusión no es tan difícil. Podemos hacer competencias, podemos hacer eventos en las diferentes asociaciones, en los diferentes grupos. La difusión es, es, creo que la parte más fácil. Lo más difícil es conseguir como, no sé quién dijo, los clientes que van a usar estas bicicletas. ¿Cuál es el tipo de clientela que se va a subir a la bicicleta como transporte? Gracias.
Okay.
Let me make one more comment.
All right, all right, go ahead.
The biggest obstacle that you're gonna have to this plan when you go in and use the, the areas that you designated, the creeks, the River Vegas and all that, is the border patrol. Please don't let yourself be deterred by what they want. You know, we deserve to have a nice living space for our community. That was the whole purpose in, in buying this land. Uh, when you go down there and you explore it, it's beautiful. And certainly, you know, if the worst comes to pass, they'll destroy that whole area with a wall. And then you won't need to worry about a bicycle path. They'll build it for you. And you can see the ugly wall that's gonna be built there.
Okay. Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Well, can I, can I do my typical thing?
Director's report, director's report.
Thank you. Please let me thank, thank you because I know I do it every time, but for any public that may be watching, I want to say that the planning commission members here do not get paid. They volunteer their time and your time is valuable. We appreciate it. So I want to say thank you to each and every one of you. And I also wanted to, um, to, um, let you know that your feedback is very important to us. And so, so please give it, and, and if there's anything we can do to help you better prepare for these meetings, you let us know. Thank you very much.
All righty. Motion to adjourn. Thank you all very much. And Flores, thank you, all those in favor. Good. All right. Thank you all. We will see you the next meeting.